Whether or not an installation in a given subdivision, obviously, there's a lot to overcome before you ever get to the point of saying, "We will do this if this happens." There's a lot to overcome. I think you need to speak to your first responders.
It's gonna be a long list. I got a pile of-
You need to make sure they understand how a speed bump might impact a fire truck.
We can get bookshelves.
I'm with you. I'm just telling you, I'm in agreeance with you. I'm in need. I think they're a bad idea personally. I don't think they work. I don't think they'll do what you want. But from the, if the people believe that they think this is what they want, then I'm with you.
Hey, I'm open for any suggestion-
Me too.
Other than speed bumps.
Yeah, me too.
But something's gotta work.
Radar is the only thing that I can see.
That's the best answer.
Yeah.
That's the best answer. But I'm with you.
But yeah, that's like, according to y'all, that's like hopping to a wall when you get done.
Yeah, we ain't gonna get a third vote. What does it matter?
Well, you know, we hadn't voted.
I'm positive we not gonna get a third vote to make it happen.
So you don't wanna make a motion?
I don't wanna do it just to be doing it.
All right. Well, let me know when you're ready.
Well, I'm assuming then there's no answer.
Let us keep working on it and considering other options. We know, I mean, we, this makes it acute whenever somebody comes here and we have this discussion. It's good and it, maybe we can come out of this with some other answer. But I agree, we, I would say at least every week, I get the same calls and conversations from not just subdivisions. I've got Holly Bush Road that now has been populated with a lot of businesses and subdivisions, and they'll run 60 miles an hour down there all day long.
Dump trucks.
It's a 35 mile an hour road.
Think of the dump trucks that flow through there.
Yeah, we, we've got a 25 mile an hour speed limit and 35, 40 is nothing.
Oh, yeah.
Speed limit's high, it's only as good as the driver's.
And it surprises, it absolutely surprises you who's doing it. I live on the main drag.
Yeah.
And I look up and it's, here comes a car flying and it's a 50-year-old lady in a minivan.
Yeah, I can say most times it's a mama.
And if, when we do get radar, the ones, the first ones that's gonna get caught are gonna be some of the same ones.
Probably my wife.
We're gonna catch a new speed though.
Yeah, my wife. But anyway, I appreciate your time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good luck.
All right, Ms. Caroline.
Hello, I was just hearing about where I went for lunch.
You sure you wanna try this?
See what?
You sure you wanna come up?
Oh, I mean, let's just take a vote on it. Um, okay, this is just informational at this point, just letting y'all know as I'm finding out things. Talked with Pat Sullivan, I think Thursday, whatever day I talked to you, Janice. He is, and apparently this has been in the works for a little while. I don't know why, I'm just now hearing about it, but I am. He is wanting to kinda relay out his offices down there, which means the office that we're currently, that our girls are currently in, would essentially, they're way in the back right now, they would essentially flip to the front of the building, but that means we lose our drive-through. So, um, I was kind of a hard no on that, that we gotta find some meat in the middle to figure out how we can, the way the building is laid out, there's not really an option for a drive-through.
Well, we just paid to upgrade. We redid that building not long ago.
Right, well-
Well, the story is different.
Oh, no. It was Mark Scarborough's time.
Mark Scarborough redid their building and they came to us to help pay the remodeling fix.
And set up that in there. Yeah, for that situation, what we're doing, yeah.
Well, that's why I'm here, because y'all know more of the story than I do. I mean, I'm still the new kid on the block, so, um, but to hear the other side of the story, that's not the version I got. Um, not saying that, I'm just telling you, there's two sides to every story. Um, so, I'm just laying that out there for y'all. I'm gonna continue to be in discussions with Pat. I mean, it's far enough along that he's got drawings worked up, so I have not laid eyes on any of this. I literally just had the first conversation with him the other day when I said-
Where's he wanna put y'all?
So, he wants to move building and water department next to each other, which for his constituents, it makes sense. That way they're close and they're not having to go all over. But it would be, um, the front side of the building that faces, um-
49?
Yeah.
Oh, 49?
Well, the-
The other street?
Yes.
Yeah, the street, yeah.
Faces right there, yes. Um, it would be that side. It is a nice area, it is a bigger area, but it would, it would completely, um, and we might could have another person, I mean-
Is it the break? Is it their, like, uh, I mean, they're, they're a city hall room.
Do you know where the conference room is? It's across the hall.
Oh.
Yeah. And literally the front.
But you're gonna do away with the drive-through?
Yes.
I mean, I'm with, Jay, we, we have put the, when Mark was mayor, I don't know, first or second term.
I think we gave him $100,000.
Fifty.
Was it 50? We gave him $50,000, so-
And that was it, and that was what it was for, was what we have now.
Well, and my conversation with Pat the other day, again, I, this is-
He was an alderman during that, y'all know.
All very fresh. Um, you know, he wants to, um, now he does want to take, because he's looking at it, is moving his, um, it's give and take right now, he wants to go ahead and put the plexiglass up in the area where my girls are now. Um, so he's saving us that. Um, and then, of course, the construction on those offices, I mean, that's his building, he would, I'm assuming, be doing that too. Um, and he, you know, would work with us with the design, but I'm kinda locked in as, you know, especially right now, I mean, this is prime time to prove that we can't lose that drive-through.
Oh, what's he gonna do with the drive-through?
Water and building.
Well, they have a drive-through for water, don't they?
No.
Yeah, yeah, the water department uses the drive, yeah.
But, no, they use the same one.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it's, yeah.
No, they use the same one.
They don't have a separate one.
Yeah, it's a separate.
They don't have a separate.
It's, um, two bays. So one is ours and one is theirs, yeah. Yeah. So, I'm just throwing that out there, just letting y'all know.
Well, it's his building, I guess he can make us, he can do what he wants to do.
Yeah.
I can't believe he's gonna do away with the drive, your, uh, the drive-through, especially now. I mean, now's a good sign of why.
Well, that's why, yeah, that's why.
I'm surprised at that.
Yeah.
Like I said, his building.
So, um, I mean, I did tell him, you know, that I was pretty strong on, we gotta figure out a way to, and, and I do think there, it might be a tight squeeze, but I do think there's a way to do it. We just gotta, gotta get in on the plans and-
You mean another way to do what? Another drive-through?
Yeah. Well, and it wouldn't be ideal, I mean, it wouldn't be as nice and it probably couldn't be really much of a, basically a, um, drive-up where you just kinda have a, something that slides. I mean, basically like we have, but I don't know if they, you can have a cover over it.
You need a cover.
Omen or something.
Oh.
Omen?
Yeah, some, you need some type of cover.
Yeah, so I don't know.
Yeah.
But-
Wow.
Sounds to me like he's kicking you out. Hey, Jen.
Mm-hmm. I, I think that has been the ultimate desire.
I think the video's shut off outside.
That was their whole thing when he did it, to try to get that office there?
From what I hear. So, I don't know.
We'll start it back up. It should've come back up.
We'll see.
Well, the whole thing in the beginning was for this right here. I mean, Judy was on board to get a, you know, tax collector, uh, collector down there and help, and it, good Lord, it's helped.
Oh, it is, it is helped tremendously.
For years.
Yes. I mean-
It's kinda like taking one out of the reservoir area.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's just taking over the southern end.
Yeah.
I mean, Pearl Down.
It is largely needed in that area. Um, it, it takes a lot off of this office and those people, I mean, they need it, they want it. It's so convenient for them. There's no sense in them having to drive.
From Simpson County up.
Yeah, literally. I mean, it, I mean, that's an hour.
Oh, I know where it goes, yeah.
I know. So, um, so I don't know. We gotta figure it out. But, back to your point, and this is just what I've heard, I don't think he's wanted us in there for a while.
First I've ever heard of it.
So, is that when you're gonna eat up, won't put Sessors Office in there either?
Yeah.
This is all hot off the press, so, just bringing it out there.
Well, I mean, if you don't want the collector, why would you have the Sessor?
So, but I'm gonna-
Because he works for them.
We'll talk about that later.
So-
Because he works for them.
I'm just, I can only speak to my office, but just laying that out there.
Well, Caroline's here. Um, you had asked Ben to get a quote for the-
Yeah, and he hit stop.
Yes, the plexiglass up over in the Flowley office.
Flowley office.
Okay, the reason I bring this up to y'all, the plexiglass loan for the Flowley department is like $1,800. But I've also been asked by Larry and a couple of others that we have something more permanent, more professionally done in, in these offices. So instead of, if we're gonna do it, instead of spending this now, I would need to get a quote for the offices that require it to have done. Like, her office now, it's been great that they've been able to put the plexiglass up, but it needs to be moved from the front side of the counter to back here, closer to where the workers are, so there's a ledge for people to write out a check in different places.
It's just temporary, isn't it?
That is just temporary.
That is. And most of our offices that have it now, it's temporary and, and those offices now are wanting something nicer looking and more permanent.
Yeah, that's something, that's something we've been having to deal with and figure it out for.
So, I'm thinking about getting somebody to come in here and quote on doing all the offices that require it at one time. And get us a quote back instead of just throwing, sort of throwing it up like we did.
When you say required, is this a health department requirement?
No, sir, I guess, I guess the ones that wanted, the need they feel because they feel they need the barrier and this could go on for some time. Justice Court has also requested to have plexiglass put up in theirs, but because they're gonna be moving so soon, I thought that if there was any chance of getting anything started more professional, as we took it down, we could put it up there just temporarily because they're gonna be leaving that area.
Right.
So, um, I don't know what the cost would be. I know we're gonna have to move on it fairly fast, especially if we would want it to be covered under any kind of reimbursement, because we don't, I don't know what the date is that this will end and it wouldn't have the ability to be covered. So, with y'all's permission, we'll go ahead and start getting a quote for those offices that feel that it is going to be a necessary period of form. So, I'm gonna have you hold off on this until we get on the record.
Yeah, yeah, he told me, he told me that he, yes, yes, he did. And I sent him to, he may show that to you, what they've done in Jackson County, how it's-
And he didn't show it to you?
Well, I mean, it's, it's not my, I mean, it's just basically, it's still just a plexiglass, it just kinda has a border. Just, it's not, I don't think it's a huge expense by any means, but it just looks a little more expensive. All right, thanks, y'all.
All right. Thank you. All right, Ms. Flay.
Yes, sir.
You have any other good news for us?
No, not. We got my cheese cheeks.
Okay.
Okay. You can help me through this. The minute you hear something that doesn't sound right, you jump in there, okay? Gentlemen, the first item under my section is the Kevin Brown rezoning request. This is property at the corner of Stump Ridge and Lawrence Road. This is a District Four rezoning request. I'm gonna give Ms. Janice just a second here. We will open that public hearing. Mr. Brown is seeking to rezone 14.56 acre out of a 38 acre parcel from A1 to RE1. The property is located on the corner of Lawrence Road and Stump Ridge Road. There are deed restrictions that will be in place. Uh, this would, the tract would be no, tracts one and two, there's three tracts. Tracts one and two would be no less than three acres, 2,400 square foot minimum, heated and cooled. Track three would be no less than eight acres, 2,200 square feet heated and cooled. My recollection of this is that there's public road frontage for all three of these parcels. And so this was, this is bordered by two public roads and three parcels would be in that, in the, would be adjacent to that intersection. Uh, the deed restrictions would also provide for no further subdividing of the lots. That public hearing is open. I'll ask at this time if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Kevin Brown rezoning request. Is anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
I make a motion, we approve it.
Motion by Steve, second by Daniel. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, say aye.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, item B under my section is a public hearing for the David Queran Dimensional Variance Request at 121 East Business Park Drive. This is a District Four property. Uh, we'll open that public hearing. Mr. Queran is proposing to construct four metal buildings at 121 East Business Park Drive. Three of the buildings will be constructed at the present time and a fourth will be constructed in the future. Each building contains 2,400 square feet of office and warehouse space. Property is zoned I2. The zoning ordinance requires no more than two-thirds of the space between buildings to be paved. The remaining one-third is required to be landscaped. And so Mr. Queran is asking for a dimensional variance of 4,300 square feet, God, it made, from the landscaped area between the buildings on the same lot. He's proposing a full brick facade on the front of the building, sides, and the, only the rear will, will remain metal.
The sides and the rear.
Oh, the sides and the rear, just the front. I'm sorry, my bad, my bad. I didn't read that correctly. So, let me go back. He's proposing full brick facade for the front of the building, the side and the rear will remain metal. Okay? So that, at this time, that public hearing is open. I'll ask, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the David Queran Dimensional Variance Request? Is anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I see that Mr. Queran is here to speak in opposition. No, I think he's in favor of it. Well, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition. Mr. President, we'll close that public hearing and, and this time it'd be appropriate to take action.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve it.
Second. Motion by Steve, second by Daniel. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, say aye.
Very good. Uh, in light of the board's, uh, action on the Dimensional Variance Request, item C is now appropriate for the board to take action on, which is site plan architectural review. This is for Mr. Queran at 121 East Business Park Drive, District Four. Renee, do you have anything to add on that? I, I gave you the explanation in the, in the discussion about the dimensional variance. I also went into the site plan architectural review and you, you understood the brick facade. So, unless anybody has any questions about that, at this time it'd be appropriate to approve the site plan.
I make a motion to approve it.
Motion by Steve, second by Daniel. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, say aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave. These, these buildings are set right behind Grumpy in there, and they'd be the nicest looking buildings out there, and it's in those, I mean-
Yes. Okay. Uh, Mr. President, item D is a discussion of a potential action to extend the actions that the board has already taken. It took, uh, at its April 2 meeting, I believe it was, Declaration of Local Emerg-, actually, it did that on the 16th of March. The Declaration of Local Emergency was entered on March 16th, and also the, uh, the offer of temporary incentive compensation to select county employees that was entered on April 2, 2020. That's the discussion item. We can take each of those separately if you'd like. Every 30 days, the board's required to revisit the Declaration of Emergency. As you know, the governor's emergency order is already, is still in place. It seems to me that what we are intending to do here is to track along with the governor's order and take action contemporaneous with his actions. And so my suggestion would be that you simply extend, this is a matter of policy, a matter of record, that you extend the Declaration of Local Emergency to be contemporaneous with the governor's order.
I agree.
We can take those items separately if you'd like, yes. Item, so this is subsection one of item D, the board's acting on the Declaration of Local Emergency. I believe the motion will be to extend the Declaration of Local Emergency contemporaneous with the governor's executive order.
I have a motion. Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Jared. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. President, item two is the offer of temporary incentive compensation to select county employees. The board recalled that on April 2nd, the board extended an offer of temporary incentive compensation to select county employees, the idea being that county employees who could not work at home, who were required to be on-site to conduct their activities. Mostly, this affects law enforcement, EOC, and other county offices where activity has to be conducted on-site. Uh, and so the board entered that offer temporary incentive compensation. Today, I believe today, was the date that the board had discussed as a term date on that, and so it'd be appropriate for the board to consider that, discuss that going forward to give direction to administration.
So, if we don't do anything, it just ends, right?
Yeah, I think for a matter of our purposes, it would be better if the board takes official action to extinguish the offer, uh, so that there's no confusion about the subject. Even if it was clarified on the records previously, I would prefer that we go ahead and document that we have-
And the way it was stated last time was when the shelter in place lifted, the incentive lifted, with the exception of the sheriff and EOC. So, the shelter in place did lift, it went to safer at home, so I told everybody under me, last Monday at 8:00, incentive was gone. Now, that does include the sheriff and the EOC that y'all had said. So, I've had several other offices agree with that. They told their workers, Larry did, Becky did, and all, that they agreed with that. So, I guess that needs clarification, so in case somebody starts turning it in from this, or this week.
Let me, let me point out something to you, that technically, the governor only lifted his shelter in place for those who didn't fall into the category of being at risk. So elderly and those with comorbidity issues are still under a shelter in place order. So, from a technical standpoint, he only lifted in part the shelter in place. And this goes to show you that as best, the best that we try to do to be, be as clear as we can, we didn't anticipate that there would be a partial lifting of the shelter in place. So this is simply to clarify where we are, okay? Uh, and so it would be helpful if the board's decision is that we just need to stop incentive compensation effective today, then let's say that clearly on the record so that there's no, no confusion over it.
Can you tell us about how much we incurred with-
You get that email?
Our payroll was including, now this includes the wages, the FICA, and the Medicare portion that the county is responsible for, $327,882.93.
It's a pretty good incentive.
Yes, sir.
And that is the incentive portion.
That is the incentive portion.
I just wanna make sure that you guys understand, that's on top of your normal payroll expenditure.
And this ran through the 25th last Saturday.
So you, you are incurring, by the way, you're continuing to incur incentive compensation, at least in part, until you decide for, for about a five-day period beyond that number.
Right. And there have been other offices that have brought their employees back in full. So if it is still going on this week, everyone in that office will get it, because their offices came back in full. That's elected officials, not ones I told to come.
True.
Yeah, I think we've done more than our part, so-
I agree.
Uh, I think everybody feels that way. Why don't we go ahead and make the motion to, to address that? So, uh, have a motion to-
I'll make a motion.
-extinguish the extended pay.
As of?
Uh, today.
Today?
Yeah. For those, the people we, that need to be paid.
You know what that means? You know what that means? From what, Monday to the day, there's still, what, what'd you say?
Well, I know that several offices have brought their people back full staff. So from Monday through today, I don't know how that person in that office would say, "Well, you are essential, but you're not," even though you've all been here.
Yeah, well, that, we can just thank that whoever did it to us.
What made, I said-
What, what office did it?
Well, one I know of is John's office is back full staff. I don't know, I know Becky's is, but now Becky's handling her portion as long as she can, like she promised y'all she would, until such time as her funds run low and you've agreed, you know, to, to help her out there, uh, because she turned all her money in. I'm not sure of the other ones. I know the ones that I consider under me, I sent them out another email and told them to go back to a partial staff as they were, having only necessary personnel until y'all made a decision, and also to remember everybody to stay at home that had been affected or was at high risk, or had fever, or had been exposed and everything else.
And, and you still need that in place?
Yes, we do.
The people that go through those criteria to stay home.
And I had also said, for, when I thought the offices under me were coming back, I said, and I told them exactly what we said to remember that, and I said, "Also, we have gloves, masks, hand sanitizers, and everything at your disposal."
Yeah. 'Cause I'm sure you saw this on the same part, Slade, you know, the presidential order covers everybody through, um, the high-risk people and children up until December 31st. That's what the president's order says, for kids, um, and people that end in the high-risk category. I'm sure y'all saw those orders that came out on that. So, we just gotta be sure that the employees that don't feel comfortable to come back because of childcare, because they have the diabetes, lung disease, BMI greater than 40, we don't wanna go in and do BMI tests, I guess, but BMI greater than 40, that, those are listed, the CDC listed those things. And, and they said those areas are the people that you can't require to come back to work.
These are recorded?
Under the president's order, yeah.
Well, that changes-
And, and that falls in, in line with what the governor's order is. The same, but the governor's order's only for another week.
Correct.
To the 11th, wherever that timeframe is, so.
Yes. His shelter in place for those issues-
Hits those same points through the 11th.
Is through mail-in. That's correct.
I, I-
So this order would be effective, can we, can we say effective noon today to put a, to put a bright line marker on it?
Yeah, at least that.
Okay.
The main thing I wanna be sure that we address, and I don't know the right way to address it from this point, 'cause obviously it sounds like some people are trying to take advantage of it, which I, I guess will happen. But from the sheriff's office and our EOC guys, that we compensate, not the fire departments, not the police departments, you know, and things of those in the areas. But for the people that we compensate, they need some type of incentive pay for being out there. I can't tell you the importance it places, or the responsibility those guys have going into these homes with people having it. And we've got our deputies out there going into homes where people have the COVID-19. We've got our E O C guys around these people that had the COVID-19, not that may have it, that may think they have it, but have it, actually have it. And we're putting those guys in that risk. So though the office people were taking our precautions, we're limiting the people that come up here if you've got those risks. We've put in the Plexiglas on it, we've put them in full decapitated suits, whatever we're gonna do. And that's a separate group of people. We've limited the exposure here. Our deputies and our E O C guys don't have the choice to say, oh, this is limited exposure. Let me go sit behind Plexiglas wall and see if I can deal with this person that can't pre-leveler for. That's not the situation they're in. So though I'm for the rest of it, cutting it back outside today, but our deputies and our E O C guys ought to be excluded from that.
They can't afford that. That is most of the fee, that is most of the cost.
We waste enough frivolous money on junk around this place that I don't even want to go down that road or that list, you know?
I, I don't think three hundred thousand is a small.
I don't think three hundred thousand costs the E O C in the sheriff's office.
I think that's the large majority of it.
Vote how you want. I'm just telling you, for the guys that have to go out there and get into that situation, I think it's there, but that's just me.
All right, so we need a motion to, to.
Brad made a motion.
Yeah, Brad made a motion.
Just noon today, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Motion from Brad to end it at noon today. Do I have a second? I'll second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, both?
Aye.
One minute.
Mr. President, that's all I have in my section.
All right. Ms. Laura, you got anything?
I had the review of the agendas, and then I have just a few little items under additional business that I need to discuss. So if y'all have any questions on the agenda for Monday. And on Monday, if y'all notice, under the budget amendment, I do have the compensation going back into each person's, each department, so that they don't go over their budget.
Thank you.
That's been mentioned.
Thank you.
So if y'all don't have any questions on the agenda or go on to additional business, if y'all, unless you have a question.
You can look at it, so.
You can. Oh, yes, yeah, thank you for mentioning that. One thing I want to do in additional business, obviously everybody knows we've had the dive call going on at the reservoir, body down for the last three, four days. One of the things that Word did that nobody asked him to do, he just went out above and beyond, and I think the county ought to compensate it, is he's picked up meals for all those divers. The guys that spent hours on the water every single day from Sunday up until, I guess, yesterday afternoon timeframe. Word out of his pocket, and he didn't even know I'm saying this, but out of his pocket cuts a check, buys food for all those divers. I'd like to have the expense reimbursed, the meals. Now luckily for us, Word didn't go out and buy them steaks, but he got sandwiches and pizzas and things like that and drinks for those guys that are on those dive calls. They spent countless hours Sunday through sometime yesterday, I don't know the exact timeframe on that one. They got it yesterday afternoon, yeah, so. But I'd like to have a direction to Word to reimburse, get his receipts for those meals at a reimbursed expense, Ms. Laura.
I agree.
If we could put that there, I need to do it in a motion or.
Yes, I'll be finding that way I can make it and give him a custom check.
So that's it, that's my motion.
All right, motion by Daniel, add this item, second by Jared, all in favor, say aye. Ayes, have it.
Now we, now we need to do.
Motion and issue check.
Yeah, so motion to, to issue the check back to Word on the reimbursement side. But check his reimbursement because he'll slip in ribeyes, ribs.
I will.
I mean, I've seen him do this stuff before as far as what he'll get.
I'm motion by Daniel, second by Jared.
And protein powder. No protein powder, Word, take that out of there.
First off, let me just tell you guys that there is no way, and I'm only gonna speak on half the E O C, there is absolutely no way that I could ever communicate to you guys just how much this incentive pay has meant to our people. It is a huge thing, and I know that the people that have received that have, have echoed that, you know, oftentimes the, the morale thing is people relate that to money. And I always ask the question, how many, how many questions were on the morale test that you gave them, you know? It's got nothing to do with that. It is absolutely clear-cut that all of our people, and I'm sure the sheriff is the same way, of dealing with this COVID-19 response of the mindset that you five men had about, hey, I know y'all guys are going into battle, we can't really make you any safer, we can't keep you from getting this COVID-19, but we just want to let you know that we got you. Here's something, we got you back, and we sincerely appreciate that, and I just want you to know that. So on the COVID-19, we did get the guy yesterday. There was a group that got attached to Ridgeland Fire Department from Daphne, Alabama, that came up with about a hundred and sixty thousand dollar towable sonar, and that's what actually located the, the individual. What I do want to say is publicly in this forum, a huge thank you to the sheriff and his staff that came out to police the parking lot for us, to get out on the water with their boats. Obviously, your guys with the E O C were out there, reservoir police, Ridgeland Fire was there, obviously the people from Daphne. And I think one of the biggest player, or reservoir fire department as well, were out there the entire time as well. I hope I don't leave anybody out. But I did want to tell you this, one of the biggest players that we had that came in was, Mr. Calhoun was able to get ahold to some people that he fishes with, professional fishermen, that came out, I believe it was about eight boats, with the absolute latest and greatest in sonar technology on their boats. And we were actually out there running fifteen wide boat arrays doing grid searches. There were days we were out there on that water for twelve solid hours. And these guys are, they're, they're all beat down, but that's what we do, and we're fortunate that we were able to get some resolution with the family. But for the Magnolia Crop Club, I just want to publicly say, thank you, Brad, thank you so much for getting those guys out there. Tremendous help, and it was duly noted by lots of people that those guys were out there, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for having me.
The first one I have that is written here is discussion of potential action on replacement of the decks at the reservoir community center and the library. That's one of the things that Ben took on when he came here. Both of them were roped off because they had rotted boards. Somebody had actually put their foot through the one behind the library. And so he has demolished the decks and would like to go back with concrete decks. At the beginning of this, when we were looking at it, Mike Harrison was going to be able to do, supply the dirt and do the dirt work for, the company to come in and put the concrete. But I think Mike's a little bit low on funds for the dirt, so we need permission if, to either adjust some money within the maintenance department or add some for the dirt. And I believe, Mike, you're gonna, he's gonna put in place with pads. Instead of going back with wood that rots over time, has to be.
You know, what was so sad, I know when we built that, that was supposedly some of that wood that was gonna last forever, you know?
It wasn't that, it wasn't that PVC stuff bored, though.
No, it wasn't that.
It's like PVC.
Composite.
Yeah, it's not that.
Some kind of composite.
Let me tell you, treated lumber now won't last anytime. It's just terrible.
Yeah, it was some composite, though, it wasn't even treated lumber on thing. I think it was that composite.
It wasn't that other.
That deck composite's got plastic, it's on the rock.
Yeah, if it was.
It rots.
It was.
Not that deck composite, it's like PVC.
It wasn't that composite stuff.
Costs about ten dollars a foot.
So anyway, we'll see a, a budget amendment coming through for the dirt for that, that's what that will be for. Also, just as a note that the Pele Hachi Library that needed carpet, the building is owned by Pele, Pele Hachi, not by us. And C M R L S does not budget for any kind of renovations, but she has put them in touch with the friends in the library that are gonna do some kind of fundraiser, whatever they do to see if I'll take care of that.
Good deal.
And she said she'd get back with me on that. And also, was it Lee's River?
Yes.
I believe that has been.
That is, yeah, they, they called me. Put new screws in.
On the roof.
With, yeah, with.
A little bit, yeah.
Has to be done. And also, this, this isn't anything you need to take action on, but several offices have requested, and one of them is for the elections coming up, but other offices have the stands with the hand sanitizer on them that you put your hand under and it automatically dispenses. I don't know if anybody even has the money, I haven't looked at that, but right now we can't even get them. Bridgette has some suppliers that said when they come up, they'll let us know, but right now they're not even available. So that might be a future budget amendment coming for those offices. I know you've called elections different. Just letting you know, more expenses to come.
Steve, you got something?
Yep, quick, quickly. Mike, or either Tim, Littlewoods, Conrad Gilmore, we had stopped them from digging several months ago, and they were supposed to put that into a lake that's subdivision. Where are we at? Has he moved, have we got any movement on that?
I hadn't yet saved, went by and looked at this thing. I've got to get with Dwayne and a few other things, but looks like they've abandoned the site. It's nowhere near a pond or whatever they had designed there on it. So we were gonna get together, we just hadn't got together on that, but I have inspected the site. Always got some celtation leaving the site and everything, so I've got to get moving forward on that here in this week and try to figure out something on that.
I'd sure like for him to get that straightened up this summer. When we had him in and discussed and allowed him to have the permit, it was all about a lake. And to make the lots out there more attractive, they sure aren't more attractive now.
And I mean, me and Tim, it's been by the side, you know, and it, it just, it's not even.
Let him know, let him know that he's gonna, he's gotta fix that.
Probably, Steve, the, the first thing that often happens is a, a letter that informs him of the multiple violations of the understanding that we have. Just go ahead and explain to him that some things are gonna happen.
I think so, too.
Potential litigation could be out there.
Well, didn't we do that in our last meeting, say that he couldn't do anymore?
Put him, we got, great, write him a letter.
Right, I mean, but haven't we already taken some action?
I don't think so. Something we just talked about it.
Yeah, we did.
We talked, I mean, we.
Mm-hmm.
We're trying to figure out some stuff with D Q and stuff like that, and it's hard to kind of get ahold of them people right now.
I'll put together a, a notice letter that lays out details of what's coming. It suggests if there's a way to stop that, if I'm asked to do what you're supposed to do.
But one quick update, I've talked to some of y'all about it, and I'll just, I'll be short with this. Bridges, we're working on it, but with, everybody's using this COVID-19. We're gonna be late fall, probably before we get to work on bridges. I mean, we're, we're looking at September.
And that's because we can't get the components.
We can't get the material. We called every manufacturer, they, I mean, we've got them ordered, we order them as quick as we can, but they're not mass producing these, they're, they're down because of people, so it's taken a while.
And that's the same way in Pine Brook, on the bridge we were tearing out, right?
That's what any of our bridges, all our bridges. But I just want to give y'all an update because I mean, we had talked about the bridges and how we fixing to go to work on all this stuff, and we are working as fast as we can, but, I mean, the panels have to be state aid approved panels.
So we'll be back in school by then.
We will be back in school by.
So you're talking about the panels, that's the thing underneath or that thing on top?
Deck's on top.
On top, yeah.
And then you got your caps. All the components, all the components. I mean, you just can't get them. And I mean, it's a mass run on them, everybody's trying to get bridge components. It was just a mass run, you know? Two, two manufacturers that make them.
I hate to bring this up on this deal, but there's a company that's doing some work on North Shore and Spillway Road.
What's their name?
I hate to even mention that.
That's not gonna be in my wheelhouse.
I know it's not, but Tim's back over here hiding, hiding the sheriff, so. Sheriff, throw him off the table if you don't mind, because I sure would like to hear something on our lovely Himmfield Construction. It's now fourteen months into a ninety-day project.
Don't go far.
I asked Himmfield to come, I asked you to get Himmfield to come today, what'd they say?
Right, and they had, had nobody available to be here today.
They're working.
They are back, they are working on the project. They're hoping to be putting down some asphalt in the upcoming days. Looks like they got a good run of weather next week, so we, they had it pretty close to being ready for the base pavement on the inside lanes on Tuesday, when the rains came Tuesday night, so that, it's obviously, the gravel's wet, they're drying it out. But they've been, they've poured curb. Hopefully, in the near future, we're gonna get the asphalt down, we get the lanes open back up. And now we'll have to obviously wait on striping, and there's things like that we have to wait on once the asphalt's down, but at least we could get potentially full flow.
I'd do anything in my power to share the conversations and emails I get weekly on this, on this disaster that we live in at North Shore and Spillway Road.
Yeah, it's, it's rolled over to me, don't worry.
I'll send them to you.
Thanks, buddy.
I'm telling you, it's, it's been the biggest disaster of a project I've ever seen on poor mismanagement on one part or the other. I don't know if it's gonna be on M dot, if it's gonna be on Himmfield, I don't know if it's on our part. But I'm telling you, I've had all I can take of it. So come Monday, I'd like somebody from Himmfield to come in here and explain to us where we're at and where we're gonna be. So I don't know how any other way to ask that other than put in an email back to, I know you did it the other day.
We'll forward that request to them today.
Again, that in a board meeting that Daniel Cross asked you, please come explain to us why a ninety-day job takes fourteen months. And, and I'd love to hear it. So let me back up. The people of the reservoir like to hear.
Absolutely.
They don't have to do it for Daniel, but for the people that pay their bill out there, let us know.
I think what we really want is just to get some completion, right?
I don't want completion at this point, I just see them drop rest of my life, but I want to know why it takes this long. Just whatever kind of crazy, if they want to blame M dot, if they want, M dot wants to blame them, I don't care, but I, I'd like to hear it.
We'll pass that request along today.
Thank you.
Hey, Mike, I had a gentleman call me this week. He tried to carry, he had some old or spray cans he wanted to drop off, and our guy told him he couldn't do it.
Where's he dropping them off?
At the.
Marquette?
Marquette.
We tried to slow the hazardous stuff down.
Just so you know, he works for the state audit division of investigation.
And he ought to know why we're slowing it down.
I don't think he does. You know, he scared the crap out of me when he said, you know, I'm working for Chad White now, I'm the head of his investigators.
We're trying to get, I mean, and this has been, it's been a nightmare with the dumpsters and everybody being off and everybody's cleaning up stuff that they hadn't cleaned up in years, Jay. But I mean, we've got hazardous waste days that we do, and we're trying to get set up to where we can do that because we're trying to vacate the old building down there that has the problems where we used to be. And we just store it down there and it's not. We, we need to train people to where they bring it on the hazardous day, you know?
I don't think one week out of the year is sufficient to do.
No, we're gonna have to do more than that, but it's, it's getting to where we're getting more and more. So, I mean, like I said, I've got to sit down with Laura, and we got to figure out some way, we may have to create a hazardous waste bin or something. I'm actually talking to some, some of those people in that department of what we can do. Can we set up a bin to store this stuff until you pick it up?
We need to do something because realistically, we don't take it, they're just gonna throw it away or throw it out of the ditch.
Right, right. But what we did, we, we pretty well took, we kind of cleaned up some of our stuff, Jay, and I know everybody's getting calls about this. Basically, we took our sand, it's on our regular, normal cleanup weeks, and we made some big signs. And we took all these old signs we had around, and it basically spells out this, 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 and this is what we take. And I've got a lot of contractors that complaining because we stopped them, you know?
Yeah, well, that's good.
And, but they finding other ways to shift it around and everything. I mean, that's just like limb pickup. I mean, I'm fighting that deal right now, people getting private tree companies to take down trees, we're telling them we're not picking those up, you know, and I got one guy, he's emailed probably half y'all around here, you know, he's got twenty-one trees down. He thinks we should come pick them up. You know, but, but it's just, we, we got to get, it's been kind of a free for all, we just got to get everybody retrained back what we take and what we take it.
Mike, on, on the dump site up there, if people wants to recycle paper, I mean, how do they need to bring it? I mean, what's the deal? I mean, is there a certain days?
It just goes, it just goes in the recycle bin, I don't think, I think that bin is strictly for recyclable stuff.
So they, there is a recycling bin up there?
There is a recycling bin at Marquette. Because we, we man that with, with a person or Brian allows me an inmate to sit down there and watch and make sure somebody don't throw a couch or garbage over there, because if they ever throw household material over that recycle bin, then it goes up, that whole bin.
There was an issue, somebody carried some recycling paper or plastic or whatever up there, and they wouldn't let them put it in there. I don't know because the dumpsters were full with other stuff or it got mixed up or what.
I, I don't know.
But there is a recycling bin up there.
There is a recycling bin there, and, and most people that use it know what it's supposed to go in it, but some people abuse it.
So Mike, Richie McCluskey, when he comes by, we're gonna take your stuff, okay?
You know, I had extensive conversations about yesterday about recycling and want to know where we put one down that way. And I explained, Tim, you're probably familiar with one Clark's tried, and everyone I know that's tried around there, they just keep throwing trash in it, too. If you, if you don't man, I mean. I don't man these dumpsters, it's, it's impossible to try to keep them straight.
Daniel says that y'all don't even man those, he says it works out okay up there, but.
The only, the only thing that halfway monitors is it's at the fire station.
Yeah, yeah.
So I mean, it's, it's not just in an empty parking lot. So I mean, they've got to go into the fire, not.
Yeah, that's the good thing about the one.
It's at the fire station, it's boxed in.
It's, it's not a, it's not a public, not a big dumpster there.
But they have to go out and fix a lot of them. The people out there are so passionate about it, I mean, they'll cut your throat over a recycle bin at the reservoir, tell them, Jan.
They will.
But I, I've never just seen throwing garbage away that people get so irate at you.
At North Shore, too.
I mean.
You what now?
We have got the recycle.
It's just that compact right there.
Thank you.
Can I interrupt one more time? The hand sanitizer stands that I talked to y'all about, Bridgette just got an email that there is eight available for us. If we want to get them, there are around two hundred for the entire setup, that includes four gallons to come with it.
Of the foam stuff?
Yes.
And where would they be placed at the voting precinct?
Uh, no, we'll have one, a hired circuit clerk, these court is the one who went outside of their court. I'm not sure we're all, but he said these are gonna go fast and if we want them, so I didn't know if we wanted to go ahead. They'll do it all through maintenance so we can keep up with them.
Well, it's part of our emergency purchase, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
They'll say, you get all eight for two hundred or they're two hundred each?
Two hundred each, that comes with four gallons. That's with four gallons resale.
That's a surcharge because it's emergency.
Normal sixty-eight dollar.
Well, this comes, and this comes with the four gallons.
All right. Anybody else have anything else? All right, we recess or?
Just, we don't have two of them.
Yeah.
All right, have a motion adjourned.
Well, that's a lot longer than I thought it was.
Motion by Steve, second by Daniel, all in favor, say aye. Ayes, have it. Seven and eight, I didn't see.
Hey, quick question.